It's loading, I'll tell you.
Okay.
Alright, well.
And now. Good morning. Welcome to the Queensborough President's Land Use Public Hearing. Hybrid and here at Queensborough Hall at one twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard in Kew Gardens, Queens, on the second floor conference room. And we are live streamed on our YouTube channel, I am Lisa Atkins, I am the Director of Housing, acting today on behalf of Queensborough President Donovan Richards. And I will be chairing today's hearing. For those of you who wish to testify virtually and haven't already pre-registered, to do so, you may please visit www.queensbp.nyc.gov. If you are attending our public hearing in person, please see our land use staff and sign up for public speaking time. Please note, your opportunity to speak will follow for your preregistered in the order that you are registered. Written testimony for today's hearing is welcome. For those who are unable to testify, you may submit all written testimony that is received by five PM today, and you may also submit it by email to planningtwo@queensbp.org, or by conventional mail, sent to the office of the Queensborough President, one twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard, room two-two-six, Kew Gardens, New York, one-one-four-two-four. Now, Kat, please review how the public hearing will proceed.
The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the requested zoning actions, the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the Chair, Madam. The floor will then be open for public speakers, please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes, a signal will be heard, and notice will be displayed when three minutes have passed. When you are called, please identify yourself, yourself for the record, and if you are formally speaking as a representative of a member group, the calendar number or application you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against the item, then you may begin your testimony. At the discretion of the Chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify on an alternating basis. Please note that if you are testifying virtually, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have technical issues, please let staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for cooperation.
Thank you, Kat. You have just been advised of the proceedings for today's hearing. The Chair reserves the right to ask speakers questions for qualifications and clarification. For further information regarding this application or any comments, Kat, please call the calendar.
Application U L E R P two-four-zero-zero-nine-seven M-M-Q. Applicant, New York City Transit Authority.
Hello.
For consideration, CB twelve Action Public Hearing nine eighteen twelve, uh, nine eighteen twenty twenty-five.
Is it passed off to the MTA now? Excellent, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thanks very much for your time this morning. Here to talk about Jamaica Bus Depot de-mapping, I am Mike Walco, representing MTA Construction Development. I'm joined by my boss, Akram Iskander, who is the Project CEO, and Lucille Songhai, who is the Senior Director of Government and Community Relations at MTA Headquarters. So we'll get right in, let me just share my screen. Please let me know when you can see the screen.
Very good.
Excellent. So, all again, and thank you very much for your time this morning. Here you could see a rendering of the new proposed Jamaica Bus Depot, and the de-mapping area is on the right, which we will go into shortly. First, we'll begin by just showing the project site relative to the surrounding area. Highlighted in red here by this dashed line is the Jamaica Bus Depot project site. We are bounded by residential properties on either side, as well as some commercial space fronting Merrick Boulevard. The York College campus is diagonal to the northwest of us, as you could see in this blue area, and we're only a few blocks south of Archer Avenue and Jamaica Avenue, just for those unfamiliar with where the depot is in the area. Moving on to the justification of why we're rebuilding the new depot. The existing depot was built in nineteen thirty-nine. Employee conditions are in very poor shape. It, the current depot is insufficient for MTA's needs to maintain and operate a bus fleet for the surrounding area of Queens. So, to that end, in order to make sure that we can maintain these buses and the employees have spaces that are appropriate for them, we need to rebuild the depot for them, as well as plan for a future electric bus fleet. So for many years, I mean, we have colleagues here that have been working since, I think, the late nineties to find how we should make this project, how it should all come together. We're finally here, it's being built. So we're happy to say that we're far along and, and things are progressing. As part of this project, we had, MTA had acquired several commercial properties back in, I believe, two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen along Merrick Boulevard, as well as more recently in the past two or three years, also along Merrick Boulevard. So those properties have since been purchased and demolished for the new maintenance building. On this slide, you can see the area subject, which is the subject of our hearing today, which is the Tuskegee Airmen Traffic Island and a portion of Tuskegee Airmen Way. We have just this very large layout here to show you how buses will enter and exit through the depot. So Merrick Boulevard runs left to right on the top of the page, and I'll go into this in further detail later, but after feedback from the community, it was decided that buses should no longer be traveling down one oh seventh Avenue adjacent to the Allen Senior Center, and buses should not be traveling on one sixty-fifth Street. Now, previously in the past, I believe, MTA had a, had a capacity problem and buses had to be parked on the street. We listened to the community, we implemented that with our colleagues at Department of Transportation, and our bus entrance was moved to Merrick Boulevard instead of one oh seventh Avenue as it is currently. So buses will travel along Merrick Boulevard, if you can see my cursor, make a right-hand turn within property limits behind a sound wall, and then proceed inside the bus property, or the New York City Transit property, within our outdoor parking lot, and then make this elongated sweep through our property behind sound walls again, and then make this U-turn into the new maintenance building. So, in order to comply with the community request to have this sort of bus flow and avoid disrupting the residential neighbors and the senior neighbors at the senior center, we need to, we need this U-Lerp action in order to make this U-turn into the new maintenance building. As you can see, the flow of buses requires us to make this sweep, and this sweep goes through what was what was a segment of Tuskegee Airmen Way, it splits into a Y, and property that the Department of Transportation, traffic median between Liberty Avenue, Merrick Boulevard, and Tuskegee Airmen Way. So there were no structures on this traffic island, besides a few trees that we had coordinated with Parks Department for. Travel through the fueling lane, go through the bus wash, and then for maintenance, or proceed to the rooftop parking lot for parking on the roof, or the at-grade parking lot. Sum out. This, I believe, we had covered in detail. One of the important notes to make is that part of Department of Transportation's requirements in order to lessen traffic and impact the community was that all of the bus queuing to line up for the bus wash and the fueling lane have to be within MTA property. So, if we have a delay because there's an issue with the bus wash, or it takes a little bit of time to fuel the buses, we don't have, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy buses backed up, lined up all the way up to Jamaica Avenue. So that's why we have to do this, this long sweep through our property. Additionally, contrary to the existing depot, the new depot is built for articulated significantly changes how our layout needs to function to accommodate different turning radii. To be clear, Tuskegee Airmen Way remains as a public street, we're not getting rid of it. We're only removing about two hundred twenty feet of it from the turn on Merrick Boulevard, so just to be clear here. If you could see my cursor, this is you can make a right-hand turn onto Tuskegee Airmen Way and continue all, all towards the west. That shall all remain. We're only de-mapping a portion of Tuskegee Airmen Way from Merrick Boulevard, which you could see here in this lighter salmon color. This is a picture of the prior-to-construction condition, taken from Liberty Avenue. You can see the existing depot on the right-hand side. The leg of Tuskegee Airmen Way that shall remain is on the right here by this SUV vehicle. So you could see the traffic island with the vehicles parked on it here. This is another view of the prior condition of Tuskegee Airmen Way that fully shows the de-mapped area, which is this, this segment of Tuskegee Airmen Way, the depot is on the right. In this picture, the Burke Building. And the traffic island is shown here by my cursor. The current condition for the purposes of construction, Department of Transportation has allowed us permission to utilize the land for the purposes of construction. So it is now bounded by these Jersey barriers and construction fencing for the safety of the public. And this is a rendering of the new Jamaica Bus Depot in its entirety and its final state. And the area to be de-mapped that's subject to this hearing is shown by the this light red box with like a yellow boundary. So, if you can see my cursor, the buses will again proceed off of Merrick Boulevard, go behind the building within MTA property, continue, and then make this U-turn here. So to be clear, the only way we can accommodate the community needs of staying off of the residential streets and complying with DOT requirements for where our curb cuts are, is if we can acquire this land for bus operations. Just a technical summary of the new depot for those who are interested. It's a single-story bus maintenance facility for offices on the ground floor, maintenance staff, et cetera, we have all of our maintenance bays there. It's fifteen maintenance bays for articulated buses and three bus wash areas. We have three fueling lanes and three automatic bus wash lanes. There's rooftop lockers and showers for the maintenance staff, which are urgently needed, as well as this administrative building here, the smaller building on the corner of one sixty-fifth Street and Tuskegee Airmen Way. That's going to be a three-story building for our administrative staff and our office staff to maintain operations, and both buildings will be connected in the final condition by this overhead bridge with office space on it. That's where the transportation personnel will have their amenities, and lockers, showers, lunchroom, et cetera, so that we can provide a adequate bus service to the area. As an important point, the capacity of this depot is larger than the current capacity. So MTA had seen that the current depot is insufficient to support bus service in Queens in its current state. As a result, we increased the capacity, and furthermore, the intent is that in the future, this bus depot will support the one hundred percent zero emissions fleet as New York State rolls that out in the near future. Additionally, an important note is that this building is LEED certified, which is a testament to energy efficiency and sustainability during construction and in the final condition. You know, lower energy costs, environmental consciousness, et cetera. This is, again, just a rendering from a different angle. You could see the, the bus depot here with the rooftop parking and the at-grade parking. And actually, I'll zoom in here. This is the pull-in off of Merrick Boulevard, off of the bus lane, that you could see goes behind a sound wall so that the Allen Senior Center and the residents are not affected. Immediately, we're in MTA property. Lucille, I don't know if you want to take this one, or I could explain your, your preference.
Sure, I'm happy to. Good morning, everybody. So specifically, we are constantly engaged with our stakeholders, our residents, our elected officials, and other folks that live and work in this area around our Jamaica Bus Depot construction project. Since October twenty-three, we host monthly construction advisory committee meetings that are made up of the residents of one sixty-fifth Street, so that is the row of houses that share a wall with the Jamaica Bus Depot. The meetings also include Queen CB twelve members, our elected representatives for the area, and other surrounding community stakeholders like churches to discuss the construction schedule, our progress, and to address any construction-related concerns directly and quickly with our project team. We also have included a dedicated project hotline, which is available for all non-emergency inquiries related to the project. And we have that number listed there. Additionally, sort of not related so much to the construction, but, you know, any issues that come up, you know, directly related to the Jamaica Bus Depot, we engage the depot management to address these issues quickly and efficiently. And so we have a host of ways that people can get in touch with us, mainly when we receive a complaint about the depot. People usually come to our MTA customer service channels, which, you know, always is sort of the most effective way. But they can also report any concerns about depot issues to five-one-one. They can submit a complaint at our mta.info website. They can also visit our MTA Customer Service Center, which is the closest one, is at the Sopin Archer subway station. Or a lot of times, we hear complaints through the community board or through local elected officials. All of these different ways that we typically hear from our customers. We get back to folks at the same amount of time, which is a quick response to engage with the depot, to address the issue, and to then get back to the constituent to let them know what the resolution is. Once the complaints are received, they're routed to the depot's Assistant General Manager, who also has gone out into the community, he goes and talks to a lot of those commercial businesses on Merrick Boulevard. He goes out and talks to the residents directly when there have been issues, and then they're tracked from the moment that they're submitted through the resolution of the issue. And then just to note, around this de-mapping, we went to Community Board twelve back in June, June eighteenth of twenty twenty-five, and the board voted twenty-six to one in favor of the de-mapping. Next slide. So we thank you, and we have any, you know, we're here and available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. You, you actually answered my last three questions in your presentation, I appreciate that. I will ask you to please stay if we have any speakers on this item, and remain so to answer any questions that may arise. Do we have any speakers on this?
No speakers.
May I ask just one thing? Chair. MTA, I see you've done a wonderful job with the rendering. Along the sound wall, I noticed there's like a little bit of black space. The rooftop has lovely green space planned. Yeah, 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 Michael, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael? I don't, I wasn't looking.
It's fine, it's fine, it's all good.
The, the black space at the, the top, i-is that available for green space?
So.
Not that, lower, on the lower level of this, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's going to be the asphalt and concrete driveway for the buses to get around the back of the building. And we have a twenty-foot sound wall here.
Yeah, the, right on top of the twenty-foot sound wall.
Yeah, that, that's just the shadow on the
It's just shadow, there's, there's no available green space.
But, but we do have, yeah, we have a green roof.
Yeah, yeah, just curves.
We love our LEED credits, so.
Yeah, 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 no, it was great presentation. Sorry, that was my only cue.
Thanks.
Thank you. And viewing that there are no public speakers requesting to testify, thank you for your cooperation, and we'll move on to the next item. Kat, please call the calendar.
Thank you all. Number two, application U L E R P two-four-zero-three-three-four Z M Q. Applicant Catholic Medical Mission Board. For consideration, CB one Action Public Hearing zero-nine-eighteen twenty twenty-five. And I believe we're calling number three because they conjoin. Application U L E R P N-two-four-zero-three-three-five Z R Q. Applicant Catholic Medical Mission Board. For consideration, CB, number one Action Public Hearing, zero-nine-eighteen twenty twenty-five.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm Richard Bass, I'm with the law firm, Aikerman LLP. I represent the Catholic Medical Mission Board. May I share my screen, please?
Absolutely.
Can you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
Great. Excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold. I just want to stay on this picture for a second. Fifteen years ago, the area north of Broadway, which is approximately here where I'm using my cursor, was a two-hundred-plus block rezoning by city planning. Fifteen years ago, John Young, who was the Planning Director, in a question-and-answer at the community board, said the area south of Broadway would also be rezoned one day. Well, fifteen years later, the area south of Broadway wasn't rezoned by city planning, but nailed by individual actions. The middle site that I'm showing with my cursor is the site we're discussing today. But my office represented the site to the north, to the west, and to the south, which was supported by the community board, by your office, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. So this is kind of a hole in the donut. It's not the most strategic planning approach, doing a block-by-block neighborhood rezoning, but that's what we left to. This is over three administrations. And my understanding is this block to the east, which is represented by another law firm, they're going to be coming in for rezoning. So here's the site. It's between Thirty-third Road, Thirty-third Avenue, Eleventh and Twelfth Street. It's primarily occupied by a one-story warehouse. Catholic Medical Mission provides medical equipment to developing countries around the world. They've been doing this for a generation or more at this site. They would like to continue doing it at this site. At the very corner of Thirty-third and Twelfth, there is a small auto repair facility. Here's what the, the zoning looks like from a land use map. It's kind of a nondescript, one-story warehouse building. Some more pictures. The two actions are an amendment to the zoning map to change from the existing R-five to an R-seven-A M-one-four and make it a new MX district. And just again, for context, I'm an old-time planner. The R-five was mapped in nineteen sixty and studied in the fifties. So we're talking about a zoning that's probably close to seventy years old. So when we talk about obsolete zoning, you know, the R-five would be my poster child. The other action would be a zoning text amendment to map the, this site as an MIH. On the left, where my cursor's showing, is the existing zoning map. You can see to the north, the west, to the south, my firm's rezonings. The R-five and the hole in the middle is what we're considering today. It would be changed if this is approved by the City Council. The action summary would result in a ten-story building, a little shy of two hundred and thirteen thousand square feet, a hundred and eighty-six thousand residential, two hundred and fifty-eight dwelling units with sixty-six permanent units. And I'll explain the unit count later in the presentation, but we increased the number of two- and three-bedroom apartments based on preliminary discussions with the community board and the council member prior to certification. There's going to be a little shy of fourteen thousand square feet of warehouse space, so Catholic Medical Mission can continue their mission there. There'll be some, a little shy of nine thousand square feet of local retail, and there'll be a little over thirty-three hundred square feet of a community facility. Here's a ground floor plan, shows the loading berth here on the right on Eleventh Street. The building opens to the south, so it's kind of a U-shaped building. As you can see in this description, we've, you know, dashed the lines of the three neighboring projects to, again, give context that this isn't a, a one-off rezoning, but it really fits in with the, the pattern that's supported by the community board, your office, the Planning Commission, and the City Council. Here's what it looks like in an illustrative rendering. Another view. And then the proposed unit distribution. We're looking at two hundred and fifty-eight units, sixty-six would be affordable. As you can see, forty-two percent of the affordable units would be two- and three-bedroom, which addresses the community's request that we, you know, address family-size units. The, the unit rental income is set by HPD and the federal government. We, we don't do that. The other night, we had a split vote, which I was surprised at, at the community board. There was criticism on these rental levels. I explained, we don't set those. I fully understand the concern. I practice across the city, and this is a concern raised in every single community board. But at the same time, there was comments that they wanted this to be a union construction project, which you can't make the project more expensive and then have a deeper subsidy that's not provided by the city or the federal government. And as your office knows, there's right now a five-to-six-year waiting list for HPD subsidy with what's going on in Washington. I've been told that estimate will, will increase to eight to ten years. That in a nutshell is my presentation. Do you want me to keep sharing the, this, my presentation, or take it off?
If you'd please leave up the, the center rendering, please.
The that rendering, or go back to?
That one was perfect.
Okay, great.
Great. Just a question. Can you explain to me what your MWB hiring goals are for this project?
Right now, we don't have any. Because we're, this took too long to get into U L E R P, and this is a nonprofit who's going to have to partner with a development partner. Sorry to be vague, but the Catholic Medical Mission is a really good nonprofit. I'm lucky at this stage in my career, I, I get to pick and choose who I want to Uh, I'm lucky at this stage in my career, I, I get to pick and choose who I want to represent. Um, we will continue this discussion with your office and the community board, and of course, uh, the council member, uh, in terms of, uh, hiring, um, the type of, of local retail, the type of community facility, uh, use. Um, we've already made a commitment to thirty-two B J to be a union, uh, building.
And your sustainability, uh, measures for this proposed project are to be included as well?
That will be included. You know, again, the, the, uh, city's, uh, policy trend, uh, uh, encourages us to be a fully electric building. Uh, the ground floor will be waterproofed. Um, uh, we will do as green as possible, um, uh, as we get into, uh, partnering with a de- developer. But right now, the Catholic Medical Mission, uh, is open to these concerns and wants to be a, a, a good neighbor. They've been a good neighbor for the last generation or so. They want to continue that.
Okay, with the understanding that that is a priority, um, for discussion with this administration. Um, I'm going to.
I appreciate that and I expect that to be as part of your resolution.
Thank you very much. Um, do we have any speakers on this item?
No speakers.
No speakers? Okay, viewing that, I look forward to speaking with you further. Um, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Bass, and, uh, Cat, you may call the next item.
Thank you so much. Be well, be safe now.
You as well.
Application U L E R P two five zero seven two Z M Q, applicant Medident Corp. For consideration, C B one action, public hearing, zero nine eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
Uh, good morning. Todd Dale of Roth Krug, Roth Krug Inspector for this application. I'm also joined by Adam Roth Krug. Um, can be available to answer any questions that might arise after the presentation. Uh, let me share my screen. And I believe. Tell me, did that screen share?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. So this application is seeking a zoning map amendment to establish the C one-two commercial district overlay within an existing R three-two district to encompass block four seven four eight, lot thirty-five, uh, rezoning the site to an R three-two C one-two district. Uh, this lot thirty-five within block four seven eight is right here is the site. It's a single, um, uh, lot that is surrounded by, uh, it's a triangle parcel surrounded by Eighteenth Avenue, uh, one hundred and sixtieth Street, and Francis Lewis Boulevard. It is approximately two thousand nine hundred ninety square feet. Uh, it is within the area of Community District Seven and City Council District, uh, nineteen, uh, current councilwoman, Vicky Palladino. Uh, as noted, the current zoning is R three-two with no special, special district. And it's currently developed with a two-story, uh, building, uh, that contains, uh, medical offices, community facility uses. Uh, there are multiple tenants. Uh, flip to the next screen. The area, uh, is characterized by a mix of uses, residential, commercial, and community facility. Um, the residential is mostly to the interior blocks to the east and west of the site, over here on the top of the screen. Um, on and Francis Lewis Boulevard, immediately adjacent to the site, is where there's commercial and community facility uses. There's a gas station, um, and auto repair to the north, uh, to the south here, and we have a, uh, restaurant and bank. And then there is another community facility, a doctor's office over here to the west. So it is in, uh, uh, character with the surrounding neighborhood. This proposal, uh, here's the two zoning maps, one of the four here, because this is the easiest way to see, uh, what is proposed. The proposal is to connect the existing C one-two commercial overlays that are immediately north and south of the site to create a continuous C one-two overlay. You can see currently, we have a C one-two to the north, a C one-two to the south, and there's this tiny little triangle parcel that was not included when the zoning for this area was originally established. And the proposal would just seek to connect, uh, the C one-two that exists to the north and the south of the site. Uh, as, here's some photos of the building, and we can see, as noted, it's an existing two-story building with uh, multiple, uh, community facility use, uh, medical office tenants. What this proposal would do, the result, would it would, uh, allow the current use to be as of right. Uh, this community facility use actually predates the current zoning resolution. Uh, it was established in nineteen sixty-one. It was originally established through, um, uh, multiple Board of Standard Appeals action that allowed the original development of the building and the, uh, uh, existing, uh, community facility use. Um, as a result of this action, no change in the use is proposed. It would still be used for medical offices and no change in the bulk is proposed. In fact, the, uh, resulting, uh, change in zoning, should it be approved, the building would be built to or beyond the existing zoning requirements. So it would be a, uh, permitted non-compliant building. So there's no proposed change in the existing use or the bulk. And overall, really, the intent of this is to create a consistent mapping on, uh, Francis Lewis Boulevard, connecting these two sites. Uh, it would allow this, uh, use that's been there for decades to be as of right. Um, for the owner, it would allow them to, uh, obtain a final certificate of occupancy without the need for continual costly extensions of term of the variance, uh, provide some flexibility for the owner. Uh, and as noted, the owner has had title to the site for over thirty years and has no intent to change its existing operation. The last note I would say, as part of the initial presentation, is that Community Board Seven did recommend approval of this application at its land use committee, uh, meeting on August twelfth and the full board meeting on September eighth. Um, at this point, happy to answer any questions about the rezoning, and I'll leave the presentation up in case there's any particular slide anyone, uh, wishes to see or ask questions about.
Okay, just a question about the board. Um, were there any issues raised, um, in contrary to the application?
I would say, oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is Adam Roth Krug. I appeared at the community board. There were no, uh, uh, no issues. They wanted to make sure that there was no new construction that would be permitted by the uh, rezoning, and as Todd indicated, that's the fact. When we discussed this initially with city planning, it actually looks like, and if Todd goes back to the actual zoning maps, while you can see it clearly on this, on that small zoning map, no, go back to the real. On the actual zoning map, you can't even see this, and city planning acknowledged that this may have just been an oversight that, uh, uh, no one picked up on this tiny little area, otherwise it would have been, uh, likely included. You could see that's, uh, that's even a blow-up of the zoning map. So it was most likely an oversight that the commercial overlay, uh, was not mapped on this property originally.
Interesting. Okay.
I just want to say, I believe Todd did address the one issue that the community board brought up, which was the C O V not being up since the nineties.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, and just to get some color on that, uh, because this variant was originally granted before nineteen sixty-one, it has to be renewed every ten years. The board can't make it permanent, and they can't grant more than ten years. So that becomes an expensive process. It also becomes a process that, uh, uh, creates problems when you're going for financing, uh, or when you're going to sign leases, uh, that everyone looks and says, oh, this is expiring in three or four years, then what happens? And, uh, so this will get rid of that stigma and may encourage, uh, uh, additional improvements in the ability to finance, to obtain better financing.
All right, all right. Um, I'm going to move to speakers. Do we have any speakers on this item?
No speakers.
Okay, nice to see you again, Adam. Um, with that, I'm going to close this item. And as for, and that nearly concludes our hearing, but I would like to reiterate, um, if there are any other public speakers who wish to register a concern, please contact our planning office at the information that has been provided. And, and with that, this hearing is closed. Uh, the next scheduled hybrid land use public hearing will be October ninth, Thursday at twenty twenty-five, nine thirty A M. Thank you for your cooperation. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing everyone.